Okay, all right. So don't go too far.
Come on, come on. Are we ready?
Yes.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Thank you.
Relax, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I call to order the November 12th, 2024 work session. It is 7:01 PM. The agenda for this work session has been posted online and in the clerk's office. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Commissioner Harcourt moved to approve the agenda.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Jennifer seconds the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. There are two items proposed on tonight's consent agenda. Item number three, approval of the minutes from Kenneth Warren, our city clerk. Item four, ratification of straw poll, David Street, our city manager. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Vice Mayor Gomez moved that the city commission approve the consent agenda for November 12th, 2024 work session.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Harcourt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. Thank you for that. So now we're, we're down to the public comment. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak at tonight's work session? No? Okay, thank you for that. So next, we have information items. We have two information items this evening. Number one, stop sign enforcement program from Chief Tarpley. And then the second one is new business introduction from Chief Tarpley. Chief Tarpley, could you please come up to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents. I'm going to ask that we can be moved, we're waiting for one more presenter, so we can be moved back a little bit till they get here. That pleases you all. You won't be disappointed.
Which one? Which one?
Both of them. They're, they're really the same thing.
Okay.
So we'll do the presentation and then we'll talk about the, um, the new business part of it.
Okay. All right. So you'll, so you'll give me, um, a heads up when it's?
Yes, I will, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think, I think.
Um, so we have, uh, four remaining action items this evening. Item number five, strategic partnership policy, David Street.
Give him a minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The proposal that you have in front of you tonight is, um, seeking guidance on how to develop a, um, slightly more formal and, um, let's say, more, um, review pace and strategic partnership policy. The city has had great success leveraging, um, public-private partnerships, um, nonprofit organizations, other governmental entities or quasi-governmental entities.
You won't be disappointed. Which one?
Both of them, they're, they're really the same thing.
Okay. Oh.
So we'll do the presentation and then we'll talk about the, um, the new business part of it.
Okay. All right. So you'll, so you'll give me, um, a heads up when it's?
Yes, I will, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think, I think.
Um, so we have, uh, four remaining action items this evening. Item number five, strategic partnership policy, David Street.
I'll give him a minute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The proposal that you have in front of you tonight is, um, seeking guidance on how to develop a, um, slightly more formal and, um, let's say, more, um, review-paced and strategic partnership policy. The city has had great success leveraging, um, public-private partnerships, um, nonprofit organizations, other governmental entities or quasi-governmental entities. However, um, it has done this largely on an ad hoc basis. With many of the announcements that the city has made, from multinational healthcare group Care Access to, uh, a pending announcement with the Washington Commanders, um, you know, the city has teed up to really leverage public-private partnerships, although it needs a framework that the commission is, um, is agreeable to, to take that to the next level. So, what we've proposed is a process through which, um, potential P3s can be identified, vetted, and then presented to and approved by the commission. It also includes a standardized, um, strategic partnership agreement. The purpose of the strategic partnership agreement is to very clearly articulate the commitments and benefits on both sides and to underscore the public benefit to the agreement. For example, the city has had good results with a number of local and regional businesses that provide, you know, donations to the city during, um, gift drives. They've organized drives that have, you know, given away coats and uniforms and school supplies to local schools and residents, so on and so forth. The purpose here is really to document that better and to firm up the due diligence that we and the city attorney do, um, to formalize those agreements. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the commission? I feel like this is really well-needed moving forward, um, to make sure that we do document these partnerships and develop them as they go on. I think it's very important because we're going to become a real hot commodity very soon. Do you all agree?
And I think it's also good that we have this, the same process, so it's fair.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it's, it's good that we have the same process across the board. You still can't? No?
You didn't hear what I said? Oh, okay, I just need to pull it up. Thank you. So did you need to repeat your?
Yeah, I was saying that I think it's good that we have a, a harmonized process across the board so that, uh, it is a level of fairness, um, and that we have a standard operating procedure to vet people the same way.
Yeah, and, and to underscore your point, Commissioner, that doesn't stop referrals. We love referrals, referrals are great, referrals come in from all sorts of places, be they elected officials, cold solicitations, other partners that exist. This just really seeks to do what you said, which is more or less codify what we're already doing, and put it into a process that we can then rely upon when, um, we are talking about what we're doing in the community or outside the community.
Any other questions from the commission? So, um, we're going to ask, um, that staff develop a strategic partnership policy with elements as provided today and report, um, as discussed from this meeting to return on December 5th with a draft policy for consideration. So there is a motion, um, for that.
I will take it, please. I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that the city commission direct staff to develop a strategic partnership policy with elements as provided in the November 12th, 2024 staff report and as discussed at the November 12th, 2024 work session and return to the commission's December 5th, 2024 city meeting with a draft policy for consideration.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Tillman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0, thank you for that. And we look forward to, uh, draft policy on the December 5th meeting. Okay, so, um, I, I feel like we on, we should continue with item six and then we'll open it back up to you, Chief. So, item six is organizational matters, as David Street and Vice Mayor Gomez.
Okay, so, um, as we've discussed in previous work sessions, um, we've decided to, um, revamp our liaison ship, um, informal structure that we had on the commission to, um, break down, continue to break down silos throughout the, uh, departments and allow us to work together a little bit more cohesively to ensure that the priorities of the commission are being implemented throughout our departments. And so we have grouped our, um, departments, our committees, our various initiatives under these larger buckets, including public safety, health and welfare, government administration, um, and then I think we have a couple of things that everyone is over as the full commission. And we also made some, um, assignments during the last meeting. So we have our pairs here, and I think we wanted to open up the discussion today to determine who would, uh, work with Commissioner Jennifer on, um, government administration bucket. And so I will open that up to the floor if anybody has any expressed interest in working with Commissioner Jennifer under the government administration.
Yeah, I. Any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner Harcourt?
Yeah, I, um, I'd be happy to jump in and, and take that. Um, I, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Gomez and I, we've kind of already started working together, and, um, we work together well, so I don't see this being a heavy lift for us together. And so I think I'd be able to work with, uh, Commissioner Jennifer. We work well together as well, so I think this is a pretty easy lift.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Gomez, your goal was to pair up two, and looks like we are there. Uh, did you want to add anything else to that?
Um, no, but maybe we can just now take a look at the table above, which has sort of how we've outlined what would fall under each bucket, just for the public. So it's a combination of departments, committees, and initiatives, um, which these align with the mission that we've outlined, um, and just recognizing as we want our departments to work across teams and break silos, we should be working the same way. And it would also give us the opportunity to cover one another, so.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? So we're all in agreement, and, uh, I can ask for a motion?
I can take that.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I, Vice Mayor Gomez, move that the city commission confirm department and advisory board liaison ships as provided for in the November 12th, 2024 staff report and as amended during the November 12th, 2024 work session.
Could I get a second?
I, Commissioner Jennifer, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. Now, we have our new assignments. Okay, so we're going to circle back to, uh, Chief Tarpley on his new business items or presentation.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, thank you. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents, uh, we're going to have a presentation. So for our start, I'll say that, uh, uh, this is a big item here. We've been hearing a lot of complaints, I've been listening, listening. After the last meeting, we talked, and Commissioner Tillman shared with me the new, uh, legislation that came down about the stop sign enforcement, um, did a little bit of research that a company of, we've known about for quite some time, um, reached out to them and, uh, worked some stuff out to have them come and do some, uh, some, uh, research for us. There's a lot of residents very attentive, they, they've noticed the cameras around the city, and those cameras have been doing exactly what they, uh, tend to do, and gather some data for us, uh, to see exactly what our habits are here. And here from us today, from, um, probably going to get all this wrong, but pronounce it wrong, but they'll correct me, uh, from Obit, Obit will have, uh, the CEO, Mr. Drew, come up, uh, and present their Let's Drive Safe program. And there's a couple of streets, uh, six streets in the incorporated city that we've chose to use, um, and collect the data from, so he's going to do the demonstration, talk about the software, and then also show some of the, um, data that was collected here. So without further ado.
Hey, y'all. Thanks so much for having us. Probably get started in a couple of minutes, but, um, just to introduce myself, my name is Drew, and I'm the CEO and co-founder of Ovio. We're a company that believes that, uh, you know, there aren't accidents, it's, it's all crashes that can be preventable. And the ethos of our company is trying to find a way to make the roads safer, communities safer, and, and people a little bit happier. Apologies for being a few minutes late, uh, the, the DC traffic is, is famous, and I had a chance to experience it myself.
Is there a button? Click the button. We have these at work.
Yep.
So I can, I can start speaking a little bit to the background of the company and, um, uh, what we've been up to. So the, the background of the company is that, uh, my co-founder and I were technologists in Silicon Valley, and we were working on traffic safety for commercial vehicles, so, you know, the big trucks that are going around. And the people, the owners of these trucks came to us and told us that the drivers are crashing, uh, all the time. And when you have big rig crashes, you know, it's a pretty big deal. So they asked us to build technology that could help them drive safer. And so we built these tiny cameras, they're AI-powered cameras, and these cameras could, could detect all sorts of unsafe driving behavior, uh, skipping stop signs, speeding, using their cellphone. And the small camera would give an alert in real time whenever that would happen. And we found that it decreased crashes by 25%. And we deployed this camera everywhere, um, you know, on, almost on 200,000 trucks, and it really made an impact. And so from that experience, we realized, hey, AI-powered technology is, is really changing the, the world of safety. And we should build a company that can bring this kind of technology to public safety and communities, um, because there's, there's a really rising need for that. And so our company was born out of that, um, you know, we're based in Silicon Valley. We have, uh, folks who worked at Google, who worked at Apple, who, who worked at LinkedIn. And so we're trying to infuse all the best parts of some of those devices that everyone has in their hands into public safety technology for municipalities. So, that's just an image of, uh, the, the camera that we developed. If we, if we go to slide two, there's actually a little bit of an intro video that if you hit that button, you should be able to play it. And if you could just make it fullscreen. So we're really focused on trying to build a, a product that really involves the entire community and helps with the stop sign problem as well as all the traffic safety problems. So if you go to slide four, and I think there should be a way to make it fullscreen if you, um,
Presentation view.
Uh, from the button. There we go. So in general, what we've been seeing and hearing from the community left and right is that roadways have felt a little bit more unsafe than ever before. And if you go to the next slide, um, we've actually spent a lot of time in Prince George's County collecting data to understand how bad is the stop sign problem. Everywhere we put these devices, we counted stop signs, and it was just three or four intersections. We counted almost 27,000 violations a day. And this was contributing to, um, a lot of the pedestrian fatalities that have been happening. One stat that we learned of is, out of all of Maryland, 24% of the pedestrian fatalities are happening here in Prince George's County, um, and some of these stats are, are the reason why. So if you go to the next slide, um, we thought a lot about why is this happening? So one is officers are stretched thin, you know, there's so many calls coming in all the time. And the second piece of this is that reckless driving behavior is getting, getting worse. And it's, everyone uses their cellphone when they drive these days, everyone wants to speed up a little bit as they go through a stop sign, it's, it's a, it's a problem that's getting worse and worse. And historically, some people have, have been hesitant about camera enforcement. I think, um, you all here at District Heights have, have been a little bit ahead of the game, but, um, sometimes the community can, can feel nervous about it. And our goal is to figure out, how do we build something that has community buy-in? Something where, uh, everybody recognizes that this actually makes the streets safer. As you go to the next slide, um, and thanks so much for, uh, for, uh, being my partner on this. What you notice here is, what we want to do is build a world where you have a happy community, safer drivers, and everyone's bought in as, as a collective to solve this problem together. And so in the next slide, uh, we talk a little bit about our program, which is called Let's Drive Safer. And if you go to the next slide, the program has three pillars. The first is advanced technology that allows you to detect all sorts of different kinds of driving behavior. The second is community buy-in, we want your community to love you as a result of this program. And finally, you have citywide deterrence, and it's totally cost-neutral. And when we say cost-neutral, what that means is there's no upfront cost to get started. And as ticket revenue starts coming in, we will collect a portion to, to cover the cost of the program. But even if there's zero ticket revenue comes in, we won't charge you. There's zero impact to your budget, because we believe public safety shouldn't be something that is hard for you to decide on, it should be straightforward. So let's talk a little bit about the, the technology. If you go to the first slide, the power of our technology is, is like I mentioned in that motive video. We can detect many kinds of behavior from a single camera. So you'll be able to see both when people are skipping stop signs, when people are speeding. Uh, this is actually a video here in Forest Heights. If you go to the next slide, um, I think it's the same one, if you go to the next one after that, one of the powers about AI is you can actually detect the full context of the scene. So as you can see here, the, the driver does skip the stop sign. And it's kind of a rolling stop, it's not that big of a deal, but if an officer saw this, they would probably write a citation, and that's because of the context of the scene. And with our technology, we can detect all of these kinds of things. So was there a stop sign violation? Was there a near miss with a pedestrian? Was there a bicycle that went by? Those are all the kinds of things that, um, are key to make a decision on automated enforcement. And that'll actually help the community also understand why they're receiving tickets, because you have that kind of, um, insight. Now, if you go to the next slide, one powerful thing about these, this technology is, similar to your iPhones or Samsungs that, that get better over time, our technology also gets better over time. And so the same device will be able to detect more behaviors, like red light violations, speeding, cellphone distractions. We'll be able to count traffic insights, and so if you want to know how many roads, how many cars are coming through here, if you want to know how many, um, uh, bicycles are coming through here, we'll have all those insights. And finally, we can help with investigations data. And so if a car goes through and there's a high-speed chase going on, or if there's, um, you know, some sort of crash that happened that you want to go back on, we can actually go look up make and model and find that vehicle for you. Um, and so this is meant to be a very versatile tool for public safety. Again, cost-neutral, easy to deploy. And if you go to the next slide, one thing that's important to highlight is, unlike existing speed cameras and red light vendors where you're negotiating with Pepco and taking a year to get these things installed, our devices can be installed within three days. The power of that is that it's solar-powered. And so even, you know, two weeks ago, when we, when we first connected with the chief, he asked us, how long would it take to do a traffic study? And we said, we'll be there in two days. And, uh, chief, how long did it take for us to get there?
It's next day or something.
It's the next day, right? That's the power of this technology, we, we like to move fast, we don't want you to have to wait for safety. Um, and so similarly, with these devices, you can install this thing and get, get, get going very quickly. Now, if we go to the next slide, um, the last part that I want to talk about is community buy-in and, um, creating a collective responsibility. It's not just about the poll and the technology and the enforcement, it's about making sure that drivers start realizing that this is a collective effort. And so we create a community education campaign around this called Let's Drive Safer. And so the way it works is, we start by passing out flyers and banners and playing the video like the one that we showed you at the beginning, uh, to help people realize this is a movement that we're all starting together. And, and we want you to be able to announce to the community, we're launching the Let's Drive Safer movement. And this is an initiative that you all can hang your hats on, uh, as you, as you think about changes in the community. The second thing that we do is, we make the data transparent, and we'll show you a community portal in a second. Uh, the data allows the community to realize that there's a problem. And when we show the numbers and the videos, your jaws will drop. Uh, once you realize that there's a problem, you almost feel this incentive that, that I want to participate and be better at this. We can detect many kinds of behavior from a single camera. So you'll be able to see both when people are skipping stop signs, when people are speeding. This is actually a video here in Forest Heights. If you go to the next slide, I think it's the same one. If you go to the next one after that, one of the powers about AI is you can actually detect the full context of the scene. So as you can see here, the, the driver does skip the stop sign. And it's kind of a rolling stop, it's not that big of a deal. But if an officer saw this, they would probably write a citation. And that's because of the context of the scene. And with our technology, we can detect all of these kinds of things. So was there a stop sign violation? Was there a near miss with a pedestrian? Was there a bicycle that went by? Those are all the kinds of things that are key to making a decision on automated enforcement. And that'll actually help the community also understand why they're receiving tickets. Because you have that kind of insight. Now, if you go to the next slide, one powerful thing about these, this technology is, similar to your iPhones or Samsungs that, that get better over time, our technology also gets better over time. And so the same device will be able to detect more behaviors like red light violations, speeding, cellphone distractions. We'll be able to count traffic insights. And so if you want to know how many roads, how many cars are coming through here, if you want to know how many bicycles are coming through here, we'll have all those insights. And finally, we can help with investigations data. And so if a car goes through and there's a high-speed chase going on, or if there's, you know, some sort of crash that happened that you want to go back on, we can actually go look up make and model and find that vehicle for you. And so this is meant to be a very versatile tool for public safety. Again, cost-neutral, easy to deploy. And if you go to the next slide, one thing that's important to highlight is, unlike existing speed cameras and red light vendors where you're negotiating with Pepco and taking a year to get these things installed, our devices can be installed within three days. The power of that is that it's solar-powered. And so even, you know, two weeks ago, when we, when we first connected with the chief, he asked us, how long would it take to do a traffic study? And we said, we'll be there in two days. And, chief, how long did it take for us to get there?
I'm sorry, next day or so.
It's the next day, right? That's the power of this technology. We, we like to move fast. We don't want you to have to wait for safety. And so similarly, with these devices, you can install this thing and get, get, get going very quickly. Now, if we go to the next slide, the last part that I wanted to talk about is community buy-in and creating a collective responsibility. It's not just about the poll and the technology and the enforcement. It's about making sure that drivers start realizing that this is a collective effort. And so we create a community education campaign around this called Let's Drive Safer. And so the way it works is, we start by passing out flyers and banners and playing the video like the one that we showed you at the beginning to help people realize this is a movement that we're all starting together. And, and we want you to be able to announce to the community, we're launching the Let's Drive Safer movement. And this is an initiative that you all can hang your hats on as you, as you think about changes in the community. The second thing that we do is, we make the data transparent. And we'll show you a community portal in a second. The data allows the community to realize that there's a problem. And when we show the numbers and the videos, your jaws will drop. Once you realize that there's a problem, you almost feel this incentive that, that I want to participate and be better at this. And then finally, the money that's generated from this program, according to law, has to be used for public safety and traffic safety. And if you can tell a compelling story about how, you know, you, you installed these programs, you took that money and built the new crosswalk that we wanted, or you built the new speed bump that we wanted, now you have this story to your community, which is, look, we know we installed these cameras that some people don't love, but they're actually going back to creating our community and making it even more rich and, and safe. And so that's a story that we'd like to help you all tell as you think about this program. If you go to the next slide, these are some details, you know, if you think about the typical experience when you get a speed ticket, you go to this crummy portal and you type in your credit card information and you kind of leave with a bad taste in your mouth. What we've done is we've created something called let'sdrivesafer.com. And we handle the full process for you. So when we generate the violation, we'll get approved by the police department, we'll mail the citations out, we'll collect the revenue from let'sdrivesafer.com, and then we'll eventually disperse it back to you. But I want, want you to know that, that everything in the entire program is meant to even show drivers that this is the video. This is the video that, that you did, and here's how you can drive safer next time. And actually, in the, in the website itself, we actually asked drivers to take a pledge, where, hey, next time I go through here, do you pledge to try to drive safe, safely? And the whole goal is education, not just punitive deterrence. If you go to the next slide, we wanted to talk a little bit about District Heights stats. And so, let me see how I can do this. Can I email you another link? Okay. Bear with me. It was D Street?
Street D.
Street D. So maybe, just to get started, while, while we get the link pulled up, there's a few different intersections that we measured for this. And how many, how many violations do you all think are happening a day?
Oh, Lord.
So, so the other part of the violations is that District Heights, Kipling Parkway, we get a lot of people who don't live in the city to come through there. So how do you measure, measure that data? Do their driver's li, uh, do their license plate? Okay.
That's right. So for all of these violations, you know, we'll be able to, we, we have to by law, look at their license plate to be able to even send them a violation. And that'll help us also keep track of repeat offenders and understanding, you know, how much, how many of the times is it someone local? Or how many times is it the commuters? So what we did over the last few weeks, actually the last eight days, is we, we put this, we measured stop signs around District Heights. And we looked at a few different locations. And this is a link by, by, by the way, you all can share with your community. It's anonymized, but, but it is public. And we've already put that together for you. So if you look at the daily stats, this is Parkway and Rochelle. 389 violations a day. And what you're seeing is 500 vehicles go through, 78% of vehicles. And if you play this first video here, you can actually get a sense of the kinds of things that, that's happening.
Wow.
Oh.
They don't even stop.
And then if you scroll down, you can go to another, the next video here.
That's crazy.
That's the same area.
And maybe, maybe worth playing like two or three more for, for this one. You see this both in daytime and nighttime. As you can see, our technology works well across all periods of the day. If you scroll up, we can actually go to another location. Chief, do you think there's another location we should highlight?
Kipling Council.
Kipling and Council.
That's the real mouth drop.
So 830 violations out of the 902 vehicles going through.
Wow.
And why don't we play some, play some of these? And, and I know, I know your jaws are dropping a little bit. I want you to know, this is a Prince George's County-wide problem. It's, it's not just you all, I promise. But the way that we all make this better is by having this technology all across the county. If drivers realize that as they're driving from DC through Prince George's County, if they know that, that these are the places where we need to be careful, that's how we'll create the citywide deterrence effect that we want. And of course, we'll, we'll share this with you all. The videos are mesmerizing. I've probably watched, I've probably watched a, a good 500,000 of them at this point. But, but, but this is, you know, indicative of, of, it's not just complaints. These are real. And I'm sure folks in the community also feel this when they're, they're walking on the streets, when they're trying to walk their kids to school. This, this is a real palpable problem.
Didn't stop at either of them.
This is crazy.
What's the stats on that one?
Three hundred.
Wow.
I think we saw this one earlier. And you know, I think, I think if you look at the timestamps, what's interesting here is, this is, this is not even commute hours, right? This is middle of the day.
Right.
So I totally hear you that commute hours is probably the worst. But if people have a feeling that they can skip the stop sign anytime, you can have incidents anytime.
Yeah, we have a, a, a large walking, our seniors walk, we have a very active walking community. I'm, I'm, I'm very angry. This is disturbing. So when you see it, you know, you hear people talk about it, but when you see it like this.
I know. It is very disturbing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also on Kipling at a major intersection, a four-point stop, and I see it all the time, all times of day. My neighbor's car was hit a few months ago, someone running the stop sign. So we know that this is a, a countywide problem. Yeah, it's disappointing.
And one of the things that, you know, we've been talking to the chief about is, is when the, when the chief's out there with all, all the officers, people tend to start slowing down, right? They see the officer out there. The thing is, officers can't be out there 24/7. And we shouldn't have them being out there 24/7. There, there's a lot of important things to be handling for the community. And so that's where we think our technology can, can help amplify the efforts of the chief and create sort of a, a stand for the community as well. So if we go to, go back to the slide deck, really quickly, what we've done is, we've summarized all of these stats here in the slide deck. So if you, if you quickly, you know, go through them, you can see about 20, 2,500 violations a day total across these locations. And then if you just kind of flip through the next few slides, what you'll see is that we've just summarized what's on the portal for you all for all these different locations. And of course, we're happy to study more locations if, if so desired.
Desire.
And then if we go, I think if we go past this, I think we've talked about this portal already. One last thing I just want to highlight is, privacy is important. It's something that we take very seriously. Anytime you're installing new cameras in the community, it's something that is worth paying attention to. What we do as a product is, when the camera come, when the violations happen for the camera, the camera itself is the thing detecting that it's a violation. Once that happens, it uploads those violations to a secure portal. All the rest of the footage stays on the device, and after 10 hours, that, that video gets removed. We have the ability to change that depending on the municipality's preferences. If you want it to be two hours, we can do that. If you want it to be 24 hours, just to give yourself some time to, to catch footage if you need to, we can do that as well. But we want you to know, we take privacy very serio, seriously, and we can customize it based on your preferences as well. And so just, I think the last slide probably is, is about it. Just in terms of our program, you know, we want to help you end your stop sign running problem by creating a culture of safety here. It's cost-neutral for you to get started. It's solar-powered, it's super easy to get started as well. It's not going to be months of negotiations with Pepco. And you're going to be in good company. You know, the number of municipalities that are moving forward now, Colmar Manor, Berwyn Heights, Morningside, Capitol Heights, we just finished pilots with Greenbelt, College Park, we've done pilots with Bowie. You know, I think this is something where the county wants to take a stand on this, and we're happy to be a partner in that. And so happy to take any questions if you have thoughts on anything that I missed. Happy to, happy to discuss more.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennifer.
Thank you. First of all, this technology is incredible. I think that everyone sitting here knew that there were violations that were occurring. But to see it and those numbers is, is just, it's really scary. And it's, it's just unbelievable that, that you don't even have people at some points, not even pausing at these stop signs, just blowing through. But anyway, my question is, are there, have you had any occurrences of violations with the machines themselves? Right now, the pilot, you, there aren't any tickets that were issued, it's just observance. So I'm just, I'm nervous about, you know, if, if we get these machines and, or these devices installed, if there will be any vandalism on them.
Yeah, it's a good question. I thi, I think the first question I'd ask is, you know, you all have speed cameras, is that right? And how often do those get vandalized?
We haven't had any.
No.
Okay. So our, our assumption is probably it's going to be something somewhat similar there. The one thing I will highlight is, we have an on-the-ground maintenance team here in Prince George's County. And the nice thing about our device being hooked up to 5G is that as soon as something goes down, we immediately get a notification and we immediately tell our maintenance team. And what's, what's also special about our technology is that, like I mentioned at the beginning, we built a very low-cost sensor, that's the power of AI. And so even if there's vandalism, if someone were to come and come down and try to attack the camera or take the camera somehow, you know, they'd have to get on a ladder and, and do the whole thing, we can replace that within days. And so it's, it's typically what we do is for, for active vandalism, we'll, we'll take that out of the ticket revenue. And a camera is probably $200, so it's, it's not a big deal. But our goal is, how do we get this thing back up and running as quickly as possible? And of course, hopefully our cameras will catch the footage of who did the vandalism as well.
Another question I have is, you mentioned that the machines are solar-powered. Do you have some type of backup? Because once the sun goes down, I noticed that you were still displaying footage in the, in the evening. So how, how does that work?
Yeah, definitely. So there's, there's a, there's a solar panel and there's a battery pack as well that's constantly collecting energy. Now, one of the things that we've noticed is, we've, we've had a chance to, to do pilot programs throughout the winter. And typically, as long as we see a little bit of sun every six days, we're perfectly fine. Now, if you end up having a stretch of eight days, 10 days where there's no sun at all, that's where our maintenance team will come in and swap batteries as a live swap to keep the program going. But generally, what we've found is, having the right sort of solar panel with that battery pack keeps it going all year round.
My final question is, how close does that camera get? Because you mentioned that you might be helpful in terms of investigations. And I'm, I'm wondering, in a case of an accident where you have a driver that may be distracted on their phone, how helpful, how close can you get in to see that that was going on and that may have caused an accident?
Yeah, it's a great question. So for our default unit, the, the footage is going to look sort of like the footage that you saw from those community videos, right? We're, we're sort of behind the vehicle. We'll have a second camera that can look at the license plate, but we're not looking directly inside the hood of the vehicle. One thing I will add, and Mr. Street, if, if you can go back, if you could exit out of presentation mode for a second, and if you go to the top slide, I think it's probably slide seven, we're working on another technology. If you scroll down just a little bit more, it might be slide 13? Let's try that. Yeah, there we go. So if you click on that slide and go to fullscreen mode, we are working on another technology to detect driver distraction. And there's actually a pretty novel technology here where we can detect when the person's on their phone. And as you can see, it's privacy-aware as well. So that's another unit that we can add to your stop sign enforcement camera. A couple of things to note is, it's not legal to ticket yet on cellphone distractions. So it would be primarily for the purposes of evidence gathering. There are multiple bills being discussed to allow ticketing on cellphone distraction. And if, if you're interested in, in supporting those bills, we can, we can talk about it. But basically, for now, the technology supports the, the view of the car going past. And then we can turn this on for you if you want as well.
Uh, one last question. This is the DMV, and so we've got folks from all over driving in our city. Are you able to also issue tickets outside of Maryland? Can you, like, we have a lot of Virginia tags, Virgin, Virginia drivers here. Are you able to issue those tickets as well?
We can, and we will. The problem is that they don't have reciprocity in terms of if you don't pay the ticket. So what happens, typically what we've heard is, in Maryland, 70% of drivers will pay their ticket because, you know, they'll get flagged otherwise. And out of, the out-of-state folks, they typically pay their tickets at a 30% rate.
Thank you.
Now, you know what, one thing that's interesting is, we were, we're deploying in Colmar Manor, and they had the same, same point, the concern around, hey, most of these people will be out of state. And then since we had the data, we were actually able to count how many violations were happening and was it in-state and out-of-state. We actually found that the in-state numbers were close to 70%. And so that was a little bit of a surprise for us because we thought it would be a lot of commuters coming through. But I do think there's a lot of people in Maryland commuting through.
Thank you.
I lost the bet. I have a question. I bet Vice Mayor that I wouldn't have any questions tonight, I lost. Because this is exciting, I didn't know. Thank you, Charlie. My question deals with calibration of the units. So when you have these detection units, a lot of times, a lot of people don't know that you can sometimes beat them if you go and you talk about, you know, when was the last time this unit was calibrated? And who's responsible for reviewing them? Who's responsible for that part of it?
Absolutely. So in the legislation for speed cameras, calibration is a big part of it. Because in a speed camera, all you have is a radar. In our case, because we have videos and the stop sign evidence is so clear, the legislation doesn't actually say anything about calibration. And so, so the way, the way that you contested, drivers can contest their tickets, but there's clear video evidence. And so if they do contest it, they, we do have a court system integration set up, and we will help them get a court date, and they can go to the court and request, hey, I want to contest this ticket. The, the, the judge is just going to pull up the video. And most likely, they're going to follow the letter of the law there. Now, this hasn't started yet. The bill just went to effect, the, the court system's going to get going in, in January and February. But from the volume that they expect and what they see from speed cameras, they don't expect the contestation to be a huge, kind of like, problem for them.
Okay. And what is the warning time? How long will we just be sending out warnings?
So in this case, the bill actually doesn't specify any warning period. So you can choose. Well, we've been working with some municipalities, saying, look, why don't we do a two-week period where we may issue some warning letters, but primarily, we're using that time to, to share this sort of data with folks and pass out those assets and, and build, build an awareness of this. And then two weeks later, we can get the program started.
And what's the average cost of a ticket?
$40.
Forty bucks? And the split is 70/30?
The split, so we're, we're not able to charge on a, like a split basis. I think that's allowed for red light cameras. For, for our charge, it looks a little bit more like the speeding cameras.
Okay.
Where what we do is, there's a certain amount of activities that we do, which is DMV lookups, mailing, all of these kinds of things, and we can charge for that. And so typically, what we're doing is, we're charging about $10 for every violation that we process. And then we'll hand that processed violation over to the chief to approve. And then some subset of that will get mailed out and get revenue back.
Understood. And one final question, with the out-of-state, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get that money back. Is, is there any way that we can maybe turn it over to a collection service? I think we, we start doing that with our red light. Okay. All right. So we can, can we set that up concurrently?
We, we do offer collections as part of it. So for the things that don't get paid within 45 days, we have a collections agency as part of our offering. part of our offering that will chase these folks. They take about a 25% cut of whatever they recover, and the rest, we'll distribute back to you all. But again, I think even for the collections agency, if a person's in Virginia and there's no real threat if they don't pay, I can imagine it might be tough for the collections agency to collect as well.
Yeah, I just, I want something on their credit still, just because it's not the fact, even about the money, it's just so disrespectful and egregious that they come into our community and do that. And, you know, we know these people that live here. And I'm seething, so, yeah. I just want them to know that at least there'll be some type of repercussion for them coming in here, and it would change them at least to say they won't, they'll go around district heights. Those are my questions, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yes, I have a few questions.
Sure, Vice Mayor.
Did you say that the bill has already taken effect? Or it will? Okay. And then, I wanted to go over the data protection and privacy process that you outlined. So, you mentioned that the camera uploads data of violations to a server? And then, we have access to that server or that it's transferred over to us?
You have access. So, everyone who has authority over the program, which would typically be the chief, but you could potentially have more accounts as well, can log into the portal, it's a secure portal that's based on AWS, to access all the videos.
Okay. Okay. And so, it's only the violations that are getting uploaded? And then, what is actually being recorded on the camera would be deleted after a number of hours to our choosing?
That's right.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I mean, I'm excited about this. I know we spoke about this a few months ago at MML this summer. And so, I'm happy that, thank you Commissioner Tillman for clarifying that the bill had passed with Chief Charlie so that we can get this moving. Because we all know what a big issue speeding and red light violations are here. We've talked about traffic surveys in the past, and this is just a small piece of that, six intersections, and we see what the impact is. So, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, there's about six municipalities that are already participating?
So, 12 have done pilot studies with us. And a lot of them are in different processes of moving forward. Like I mentioned, we won an RFP with Berwyn Heights. Comar Manor has signed a contract. Morningside has signed a contract. Capitol Heights is on the cusp of signing a contract. We're just doing the last-minute negotiations on the specific language. Who else? Landover Hill.
Oh, Landover Hills? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, the councilor has approved the program, but we're working now with the police department on, again, like, what specifics of their program. Who else? College Park just finished their pilot program, and they're working on getting their ordinance passed to enable stop sign enforcement in their community. So, there's quite a few people moving forward. My expectation is that the first actual ticketing units will be live in Morningside and Comar Manor.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions, comments?
Have a comment?
Sure. Question, Tillman.
Thank you for coming. You know, I think we had an extensive conversation at MML, and I appreciate you, you know, sharing this technology with us, you know? And you've done some great work. And I think, I think most cities, you know, that sign up with you guys are going to be happy with it. And I saw the videos, and, you know, I saw the news article, you guys do some great work. And I think that technology is needed in the city. Thank you.
Yeah, really appreciate it. And great to see a couple of y'all again.
And I did have a follow-up.
Good question.
But, no, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Jennifer, a question.
I wanted to just kind of ask, the footage on the camera itself is 24 hours, could be up to 24 hours? But is there any, like, cloud, something in terms of being able to save that information a little longer in the case of an individual that may want to contest the ticket?
Yeah. So, if there's an actual violation, again, that violation will be uploaded to the cloud and saved. Because that's the same video that the officer has to review, it's the same video that the driver will see when they log onto their portal, and it's the same video that will be contested when they go to court. So, the violation videos will be saved to the cloud.
Good. Thank you.
She asked my question.
Oh, sure. That was your question?
That was my question.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, it was very enlightening. Disheartening and enlightening.
I remember where my.
You remember? Okay.
So, you mentioned that Comar Manor is, or one of the municipalities that's working on an ordinance? I do know that Chief Charlie, if I'm wrong, that our red light and our speeding company, they helped us actually draft ordinance? Is that something you offer? Okay.
Yeah. So, actually, because there's so many other people who have ordinances, I'll just send you the one from Berwyn Heights or Comar, and I think that should work for y'all.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. That was very exciting, and thank you all for those interesting, good questions. It's good to see you all are enlightening and have good questions about those. So, I'll follow up on some of the stuff we talked about. So, this program is basically, it's kind of a shadow of our speed enforcement program that we run it now, right? So, the same way I introduced the ordinances for speeds, we're doing the same thing for these cameras here. The same way we approve our speed cameras, the same way we approve, we'll be approving these tickets. One thing that's actually glaring to me is that in a total of those spots, we had a total data, it was 2,500 tickets a day. We don't issue that a month in speed cameras. Right? So, it mattered in 30 days what that data would have given us. So, we see that our problem is not so much speeding as much, it's the running stop sign enforcement. So, there's, you know, the one, Kipling and Council was 600 something. Right here at the bottom of the hill that we all know about, Kipling and Mulberry, that was almost close to 500 a day. So, it seems like every single one of them were just about that same 500 range, between 3, 500 range. And that's just the ones we chose, you know, we know there's other intersections out here we could get same or higher data on, right? So, the beauty of this program is that, as I said, it's short about the time it takes to get this up and running. As far as our other program, we developed with Petco over permits and stuff like that, we're not doing this. It's been, it seems like it's a very, so far, very smooth and easy process with great results, much-needed results. So, in terms of collections, we do currently have collections for out-of-state tags, you know, still, so we let that collection agency fight with that. And if they're out-of-state tags, people who live in the city, we actually have a SCOF law, or this is actually on books now, which means if you owe the city at least one ticket, we can come and take your car. And we have a list right now, currently, people who have multiple tickets that, when time's right, we're going to move forward and start to, so we do have a couple other outside of the flag mechanism that if we see that car again within city limits, we are able to take it immediately due to the ordinances we already have on books now. When it comes, and actually, the very first video you seen, where was the red car running the stop sign and a black SUV behind it? That's actually one of our officers. So, that turned into a pursuit, we had an apprehension that same day there, sat in person, actually. We're probably requesting that for more evidence when we go to court on that trial, so that was actually.
Oh, okay.
I think there was another question from, I think that answers all of it, but the next step is to, hopefully, on the December meeting, present, work with, I talked to the city managers now and our lawyer here, and try to bring the ordinance forth and try to get that motion up for you all, for your consideration.
Okay. And then, once we do the ordinance, are you working on a, the scope of work? Because I know it'll be sort of like à la carte on the preferences within the proposal.
In terms of.
Where streets are settled.
Where streets are settled.
Yeah. And are we going to go 24 hours or a few hours, all of that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, again, it probably is where what our speed enforcement is, right? There are certain sections, the law say we have to be somewhere in some school zones. We know we set between three school zones relatively close to the city, so we have a pretty good range of where we can put them at. Definitely 24 hours, you can see even at night, it gets even worse, it looks like, with the clear and blatant violations there. So, yeah, all that will be included in there, the same way we had to do it for the speed cameras.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. That's it?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Wow. Okay. So, it looks like we're down to going into closed session on contractual matters. Could I get a motion to move into closed session to discuss contractual matters?
Vice Mayor Gomez moved that the city commission enter closed session to discuss contractual matters pursuant to Maryland Provision Code 330515.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Harcourt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We shouldn't be too long.
Oh, wow. The sheen.
Thank you. I don't have a granddaughter to be running after.
That's what it is.
Yes, exactly.
So we are back into open session from our closed session on contractual matters for senior services. The first action item is the contract award for the senior center food distribution. Could I get a motion on the award contract?
Commissioner Harcourt moved to award the food contract, I'm sorry. Commissioner Harcourt moved the city commission award a contract to food for thought in an amount not to exceed, we're doing two days. No, we're doing a lower number. Was it fifty?
Fifty-nine.
Mr. Street?
Yep.
What was the, um, because we did the lower amount.
For two days.
Actually, two would be a hundred meals or fifty meals twice a week.
Fifty meals.
That is a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Fifty meals twice a week.
We want the lower range, yes.
There it is.
Option two.
So there is fifty meals weekly. That'll be twenty-five meals each day, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Um, not to exceed fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars?
Fifty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars to provide food meal distribution services in a district-type senior center and to direct staff to finalize the contract and begin implementation of the program.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Jennifer seconds the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining. Abstaining.
Three yeses and one abstaining. Okay, thank you. And item eight, contract award for senior center salon service. Could I get a motion on that selection?
I can take that, Mayor.
Sure, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Tomico, what's the, uh, contract value?
Based on the discussion, you can drop that component of the motion.
Yeah.
There was only one proposal that would require a contractuality from the city.
Okay.
So you can strike in an amount.
Oh, right.
Okay.
And go straight to, um, to provide.
Okay. All right. I, Vice, Vice Mayor Gomez, moved that the city commission award a contract to, in style, to provide salon services in the District Heights Senior Center and direct staff to finalize the contract and begin implementation of the program.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Jennifer seconds the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining.
So three ayes and one abstaining. Thank you, Tomico.
Appreciate it.
We went over two hurdles, two hurdles.
So may I say, Madam Mayor, the commission is, with these two awards, the commission is now set to enter January twenty twenty-five with a full slate of programming that you approved earlier this year. This is your second major milestone for the senior center. The first one was, um, getting the building across the finish line and the doors open. And the second one, um, is getting your initial programming that was, we've been working on for months, um, across the finish line. So this completes your first slate of approved programming.
Oh, thank you.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you all for your support. And yeah, we, we've made some milestones. Um, so I see that, um, we do have an activity schedule. So has this already gone out?
Uh, we just, we had a, we just, based on the stage, but there is a version of this, very similar. This week, it's, it's out now this week.
Okay.
And that one is, is coming out.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussions?
No, um, maybe. I'm just kidding. Nothing else.
Okay. All right, any announcements? Um, so we're scheduled for a work session.
The commit, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The commission has two remaining meetings this year. There's a work session scheduled on November twenty-sixth and a city meeting scheduled on December fifth, after which you will go into a well-deserved recess.
So on the December fifth meeting, are we going to have our roadmap to our economic development and annexation so we'll be able to actually present it again to the residents?
Yes, so there will be an informational update and kind of a year-end closeout because, um, it doesn't seem like it, but you made a lot of really large decisions this year in those two areas. The commission can also expect to start receiving scheduling polls for January, February retreats specific to those two topics.
Okay, all right. Are there any other announcements before I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, just one quick one.
Sure.
So I had a great birthday yesterday, um, you know.
Oh, right.
Much love to all the veterans, you know, happy to share my birthday with you guys, you know. Thanks to all the men and women who serve, you know, um, yeah, and that's pretty much it.
All right. So, uh, Commissioner Jennifer, did you want to comment on the Veterans Day event?
I think it was a beautiful day and a wonderful service and a tribute to our veterans. Well deserved. And so I'm very, very pleased with, with how everything went. Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say I'm, I will be visiting District Heights Elementary School tomorrow to read Clovis Keeps His Cool. So I'm excited about that.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. I thought it was a great Veterans Day event. Um, Congressman Glenn Ivy did present the Veterans Committee with a proclamation. Um, will not present it, but handed it over. So, um, I think each year it gets bigger and better. And I'm very excited about the direction we're going into. But I look forward to some new objectives as we move forward to expanding the Veterans Committee.
Mayor, I have one comment actually on the Veterans Day rally. I really, um, enjoyed our speaker. Colonel Bryan.
Lieutenant Colonel.
Oh goodness, I'm not good with these military salutations. Lieutenant Colonel Wagner. I really enjoyed hearing from an active service member.
Yes.
Uh, I think that's the first time that we've had an active service member speak and I really, um, enjoyed his, his call to action on, you know, making sure that we are staying connected to vets and active service members. Um, that they're a part of our communities. And so, yeah, I, I really, I really liked our selection this year. So thank you to the planning committee and the mayor and Commissioner Jennifer for all the hard work that I know you all put into planning, um, this event yearly.
And then we did, uh, an extinguish, extinguish, uh, veterans award.
Yes.
So can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, well-deserved, um, resident, Mr. Leonard Marshall, who's lived in the city forty-nine years, he and his wife, Mrs. Geraldine Marshall, who, um, the community should know both of them very, very well. But he received, uh, a beautiful, oh, Mayor, you, that, it was beautiful award that he received. And, um, it, you know, we can't put a price on the service of these veterans that give and give and give. Um, but I'm hoping that that token gift to Mr. Marshall is a start. So, yes, congratulations again to Mr. Leonard Marshall.
Okay, well, could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Commissioner Harcourt moved to adjourn at eight thirty-six.
Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion, motion carries, meeting has been adjourned.